This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone see and hear me? Amen, amen, amen. Couple of minutes got away from me, I was jamming over here. I didn't realize I had the, uh, the mic on. I was getting charged up before we get started this evening. I love that song, "Amen, Amen." Uh, it's amazing how, uh, Sunday's message and today, what we're going to talk about tonight, rather, and Sunday's excitement, uh, what we're celebrating, um, all ties in together. Uh, he dropped the charges, amen, so it all ties in together. The reason why we're excited, uh, and it all had to, um, it all had to come together so that we could have everlasting life. Uh, it reminded me of a sermon, uh, this pastor preached, uh, and it was called, "When a Bad Night Turns Into a Good Morning." Uh, when Jesus died on the cross, yet on the third day he rose again. And he says, "A bad night that turned into a good morning. Weep and may endure for a night, but joy cometh, uh, cometh in the morning." Uh, so we, I'm excited, I'm looking forward to it. Actually, we celebrate the resurrection of Christ every day. Uh, but this is just a day that we can all come together, um, and celebrate, uh, fellowship with one another. How many has been gleaning and, uh, and still feasting off Sunday's message? Amen, amen, been feasting off it and, uh, and I saw me all in that story. I don't know about you, all in that message. I see me in every message, but for some reason, I can locate myself very quickly, amen, in that message to see that the Lord will use broken things, broken people, broken situations, uh, and he's got good use for it. That's the wonderful thing, he, he makes good use and have good use for those broken things, so we're no longer broken. Uh, we're all together in, in Christ Jesus. All right, I'm going to turn this over, uh, to, uh, duty, uh, deacon or deaconess, um, for our scripture and prayer, and then we're going to get into this exciting, um, topic righteousness, righteousness. Well, before we get started, let's just, wherever we at, uh, give the Lord a hand praise. Amen, let's start our evening rejoicing in the Lord for all he has done. Rejoicing because it is good to be seen. Amen, amen, you don't have to get a visitor pass. You don't have to get this and go through all the nurses and doctors. You can see me right here on the screen, and it is good to be seen and it's good to see you. And so I thank God for all he has done, um, and I'm excited for all he has still in store for you and I. All right, come on, Deacon.
Our scripture, our scripture will come from Psalms 54. When you have it, give me a thumbs up. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Psalms fifty, Psalms fifty-four? Okay, and it reads, "Save me, O God, by your name, and judge me by your strength. Hear my prayer, O God, give ears to the words of my mouth; for strangers arise up against me, and oppressors seek after my soul. They have not set God before them. Behold, God is my helper; the Lord is with them who upholds my soul. He shall reward evil unto my enemies, cut them off in your truth. I will freely sacrifice unto you; I will praise your name, O Lord, for it is good; for he has delivered me out of all troubles, and my eyes have seen his desire upon my enemies." May the Lord add a blessing to the reading. We bow our heads in prayer. Father, we come to you today to say thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, Father. Thank you for being in our present once again, Father. Thank you for all that you do for us, Father, because without you, nothing that we do would be possible. So therefore, I just say thank you for waking me up and allowing me to see this day pass, this day. Thank you, Father, for my pastor. Thank you for the congregation. Thank you for everyone that supports us, Father. And we ask that you will be with us, because without you, we couldn't do anything. So we call upon your name, we call upon the one that helps us. We know where our help comes from, our help comes from you, Father. So we always give you the most highest praise that there is. And we just say thank you, and thank you for this lesson. Thank you for everyone that is participating in this lesson tonight, Father. And give us guidance and keep us until we meet on Sunday, Father. We lift you, we lift up your name in everything that we do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, amen. Come on and bless the Lord with me. 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 Hallelujah. 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 Come on and bless the Lord with me. 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 Everybody. Hallelujah. 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 Come on and clap your hands with me. 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 Hallelujah. 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 Amen, 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 amen. Before we get started, let's get one or two testimonies, one or two powerful quick testimonies, uh, that would just, just get the saints going this evening. Anyone have a powerful testimony? Anyone?
Pastor. You can go ahead, Owen.
Oh, that's okay, go ahead.
You first.
Well, praise the Lord, thank you, Sister Jessica. Um, greetings to everyone on this evening, it's so good to see all of you. Um, and as Deacon Ogbo always says, it's good to be seen. So I just thank the Lord for another day that he's kept me. Um, another day that he's just allowed me to see and be active and move around, because that is in and of itself is a blessing. Um, I just thank him for all of his many blessings in my life. Doesn't mean that things are always going the way that we want them to go, but God is still good in every situation, and no matter what circumstances we find ourselves. So I just thank him on this evening, I just wanted to give him glory and honor, because there's always something to praise the Lord for. So I just wanted to publicly thank him just for his continued goodness and faithfulness in my life, and to let you all know that I love the Lord with all my heart, and I just praise and worship and give him all glory on this evening.
Amen. Sister Jessica?
Yes. Yes, Pastor, I just want to piggyback off what First Lady said. Um, I just want to thank God for one, for forgiveness, for, you know, when we fell short of the glory. I want to thank God for his faithfulness. I want to thank God for keeping not only my family, my church family, my wonderful pastor and First Lady. And I just want to thank God, you know, whenever it seems cloudy, the Lord always show his face. He always shows up and show out. He always grab our hands when we feel like it's, we don't have his hand. He always have our hands, so I just thank God for his faithfulness.
Amen, amen, amen. Uh, thank the Lord for the two uplifting testimonies, if nothing else, just to be, uh, to be back in the presence of the saints, um, is awesome. Just to be, uh, in the land of the living, to be able to carry out and carry on, um, what he has for us to do. Uh, before we get started, I'm going to ask, uh, now who can get to the scriptures real fast? There's a lot of scriptures that we're going to, uh, kind of cover. Some, I'm going to ask you to participate, but there's some, I'm going to need someone to just be able to jump right into it. Um, uh, between Deacon Neville's and Trustee Spears, do you all, Deacon Neville, do you have on the computer or? Okay, all right, Deacon Neville, you're going to be my go-to man, uh, for these certain scriptures. Um, and then, uh, when we get to Proverbs, I'll get some few, uh, to help me out with the scriptures. Uh, but I just want one go-to person, um, for these scriptures. All right, how many ready tonight to get into this topic righteousness? Amen, amen, okay. Augustine, uh, said this, uh, I stumbled over this actually, um, last week, and I thought I would save it for this week, but Augustine says something, uh, simple, but, but, but I think profound. He says, "O Lord, every good thing in me is due to you; the rest is my fault." Every good thing in me is due to you, the rest is my fault. Amen, that's just a humble, a humble praise, a humble prayer, uh, a humble way of seeing, uh, who we are, who we are in the eyes of the Lord. Everything that's good in me is due to you, and the rest is my fault. Augustine said that. All right, I have two questions I'm going to ask you scholars and, and want you all to participate. The first question is, is righteousness a gift or a reward? Is righteousness a gift or is it a reward? Now, I, I don't have my Jeopardy music, uh, so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm going to have to wait on you all to answer this. Um, is righteousness a gift or a, or a reward? Is it a gift or reward?
Pastor, I'm not really sure of the answer, but take a stab at it. I, I want to say that righteousness is a gift, um, that we receive, not a reward. Um, and that's as far as I can go.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
Gift, though.
Okay, it's a gift, okay, anybody else want to take a stab at it?
Yeah, I, I would follow along with the First Lady saying that it's definitely a gift. It's something that's imputed to us, not that, um, it's, well, I'll stop there too.
Okay.
Not, not something that we've, uh, earned necessarily, but it's because of Christ that we have righteousness.
Okay, okay, all right. Sister Kenny, I think you had, uh, your hand raised.
Yes, sir, um, if we look at Romans five seventeen, it says, "For if, because of one man trespass, death reigneth through that one man; much more will those who receive the abundance of grace and the free gift of righteousness reign in life through the one man, Jesus Christ. Righteousness is a gift we receive, not a reward we achieve."
Okay, all right, she just closed the whole question down. Uh, if that's what you're going to do, you put the scripture out there and shut it all down. Brother Chauncey, I don't even think, uh, it matters what you say. Uh, we have to conclude what the Lord has said. I think I have that scripture in our, our teaching tonight, but thank you, uh, Sister Kenny, uh, for shutting it down, uh, with the word of the Lord. All right, so we acknowledge that it is a gift. When we look at, uh, this word righteousness, um, I'm going to try to, much as possible, explain it in its entirety. Uh, and my prayer is that, uh, after this, you will get a full understanding of righteousness. All right, all right, here's another question, well, let me just piggyback off what Sister Kenny shut down. Uh, "We cannot make ourselves righteous, because our best efforts are like filthy rags, uh, before God." All right, that's Isaiah sixty-four six. Deacon Neville, if you could turn there to confirm, um, what we are saying. So there's nothing that we can do, um, that would cause us to be righteous. All right, Deacon Neville's? Isaiah sixty-four six.
Isaiah sixty-four and six. "But we are all as an unclean thing, and all our righteousness are as filthy rags; and we all do fade as a leak, and our iniquities, like the wind, have taken us away."
Okay, so there's nothing we can do, um, to claim or declare ourselves as righteous. It's, it is nothing but the work of the Lord in our lives, and we're going to look at that a little bit more. All right, here's the, the other question I want to ask. What is the difference between holiness and righteousness? What is the difference between holiness and righteousness? Now, I can look on your face, like Pastor, this is, this supposed to be Christianity one oh one, uh, but you forgot, if you went through Revelations, uh, you are a senior scholar now. So if you ever went through the Revelation class I taught, you are considered a senior scholar. So surely, you'll be able to answer this with no problem. What is the difference between holiness and, and righteousness? Anyone want to take a stab at it?
I think it's, okay, First Lady?
Go for it, Brother Chauncey.
But, uh, I believe righteousness is pretty much based on your morals. It's a justification of your moral, whereas holiness is, uh, is the, is the working of those, uh, morals that you believe in, that justification of the righteousness. That was a double.
Okay, okay.
Say something doubly.
Okay, no, I understand, I think that's good, I think that's good. Okay, okay, First Lady?
Well, I was going to say, I think, um, holiness is more about our lifestyle and our character, whereas righteousness, we already discussed, was, is a gift that is not of our own doing, nothing that we can do to earn that, but it is imputed upon us because of Christ Jesus. So, um, I think holiness, it has to do with our lifestyle, our character, our behavior.
Okay, now, here's just the wonderful thing about the word of God, and the wonderful thing about understanding, uh, and getting the understanding, um, which should cause you and I to be excited and, and continue to be excited because of what we're learning about all that has happened to us. So each time we come with a Bible study on Sunday service, we should be excited and get more excited about all that we have learned and what we are finding out, what, what all that Christ did for you and I, which is the wonderful thing. Uh, uh, and we know, you and I know, Easter, uh, Sunday is not, uh, it's not the rabbit, it's not the Easter eggs, uh, it's the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Um, but not just the resurrection, it was so much in his death, so much in his burial, burial, and also in his resurrection. Um, and so we get excited the more we learn about all that was, that has taken place on our behalf. All right, with, with that being said, uh, with the question, uh, the short answer is, we are righteous because God counts Jesus' goodness instead of our sins. When we have faith in Jesus, we are becoming holy as we obey God more and more in our lives. Being righteous is being acceptable to God. Being holy means set apart for God. All right, Psalms twenty-three three, Deacon Neville's. Um, uh, so being holy means being a set apart. All right, we're going to break that down, look at that a little bit more. All right, Psalms twenty-three, three, what does it say?
Uh, Psalms twenty-three and three. "He restores my soul; he leadeth me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake."
Okay, so, uh, our lives have been redeemed in Christ Jesus, and now he leads us in the path of righteousness. We're learning now, um, the, the righteousness of God. Um, uh, we're walking in now his will, which causes us now to walk in the holiness and become holier and more holier in, in the Lord. All right. Our word righteousness is the Hebrew word, uh, zadakah, zadakah, is the Hebrew word, zadakah. In tonight's particular study, it denotes honesty, justice, merits, right, what it means also, correct, fair, blameless, and innocent. Zadakah. Zadakah, all right. Uh, well, you'll see, um, as you do your own personal study throughout, uh, when you look at righteousness in the Greek and, and righteousness in some other passages, they're different, um, Hebrew words, but in the passage that we're going to look at tonight, the Hebrew word in this passage, um, in Proverbs is zadakah, zadakah. All right, honesty, ju- justice, blameless, innocent, zadakah. The Greek word for righteousness was originally used in business or legal situations. It meant to be aware and considerate of the needs of others, to be honest, to have integrity, uh, to be upright and genuine in your dealings with others. It is the opposite of being self-centered. All right, it's more giving, it's more doing, it's not thinking of yourself. Zadakah, in the Hebrew word, in the Greek, uh, it meant, uh, having integrity, all right, concerning the needs of others, um, uh, and esteem in others greater and higher than yourself. Okay, anybody, if you have any questions as we go along, just, just chime right in, raise your hand if I can see you. If you're on the phone, just kind of unmute yourself. All right, so Proverbs, uh, cites many of the characteristics of, of general act of righteousness, um, as well as specific acts that are righteous. So when we look at the word righteous, zadakah, in Proverbs, keep in mind, it is citing, uh, the characteristics, um, of righteousness of a believer of a child of God. All right, it's the, uh, the active, all right, it's the active, it's the, it's the general, all right? So there, there, what we're going to find out is, um, there are two, uh, forms or two, uh, applications of righteousness tonight, all right? When we look at righteousness in Proverbs, we're going to see the act of righteousness. Okay, the act of righteousness. I'm going to explain, uh, both, but let's turn to Proverbs, chapter fifteen. Um, Proverbs, chapter fifteen, verse nine. Um, and I'm going to use you again, uh, Deacon Neville's, to read that. Proverbs, chapter fifteen, verse, verse nine.
Okay. Proverbs, uh, fifteen and nine. "The way of the wicked is an abomination unto the Lord; but he loveth him that followeth after righteousness."
Okay, so now, as we move on in our study, remember, in Proverbs, when we look at the scriptures, the cross references in Proverbs, these are the characteristics of general righteousness, all right? And, or act of righteousness, I'm going to explain it, but act of righteousness or general righteousness, these are the, the characteristics of, um, one who is, uh, loving after the Lord, or one who is a child of God. These are the wisdoms, uh, from Solomon, of one who is seeking the Lord, all right? "The way of the wicked is an abomination unto the Lord; but he loveth him that followeth after righteousness." All right, so two ways, uh, being described in this verse. The way of the wicked and the way of the righteous, or the way of righteousness. This comparison from Solomon shows how intense our regular behavior matters to God. For one, the sinner must realize that having gone out of the way of God has become unprofitable. Okay, so now, as a child of God, what you have to realize is your behavior as a child of God does matter to God. It's contrasted with one who is wicked, all right? So our ways, our actions, our talks, uh, the things that we do, uh, should be pleasing to God, should be pointing towards God, uh, should be in a place where God loves what we're saying, what we're doing, and how we're carrying on as children of God. But then there is that, on the contrast, on the opposite side, um, the wicked and his ways. So the way of the wicked is an abomination to God, um, or unto the Lord, but he loveth him that followeth after righteousness, righteousness, all right? So, um, what we're going to see tonight is how our regular behavior matters to God. All right, I think I said this last, uh, week, um, or maybe the week before that, that, uh, as a child of God to another child of God, I should, you shouldn't be shocked when I'm looking for what we are talking about and how a child of God should conduct themselves. So I should not be shocked and, uh, should not be surprised, all right? I should be, be, be able to look for those things, uh, that's pertaining to, uh, a child of God, or at least look for the characteristics from one who claims to be a child of God. Are y'all with me so far? Okay. So the Lord, uh, has nothing of him. Hold on, let me make sure I'm on. Okay, all right, so the, the wicked, uh, before I go to the next slide, the wicked, we gotta remember, uh, the wicked, uh, is an abomination to God, and to the, the sinner man, um, uh, he has no connection with the Lord. So all and anything that he does is unprofitable. If you look back to verse eight, "The sacrifice of the wicked is an abomination." So anything that the wicked try to do, his sacrifices are an abomination to the Lord. Uh, but the prayer of the upright is his delight. So what Solomon is showing us is the contrast between the wicked individual and the child of God, the believer. Okay, so all that the, the wicked does is unprofitable, is unprofitable to God. So the Lord, uh, has nothing of the wicked. He don't look for nothing from the wicked, he has nothing from the wicked. Neither will he accept anything from him until he received the gift that's offered, all right? Which is Jesus Christ. Everything he does displeases the Lord. So it's nothing the wicked could do that pleases the Lord. Listen, even though they say, "I'm giving to charity, I'm helping this and all that," that does not please the Lord, that's not doing or, or, or showing the Lord anything, because they have not received his gift, all right? In order for the Lord to receive what you're going to offer him, you have to first receive his gift, which was Christ Jesus. Y'all with me so far? All right, so there's the, the difference, uh, the wicked and then the child of God. The reason why the Lord will accept our prayers, accept our praise, accept our worship, is because- is because we have received his gift, Christ Jesus. The reason why it's unprofitable for the sinner, because why would I accept your gift and you did not accept my gift? Okay, so it's unprofitable for uh the wicked, it's abomination to God, the Bible tells us. It's abomination to the Lord, your sacrifices is abomination uh to the Lord. And listen, uh you can give them, you can be evil, give a trillion dollars to the homeless and guess what, that's good, you have the reward. And them out of the mouths of man, you have the reward, but it does nothing in the eyes of of the Lord, okay? On the other hand, the one who intently pursues righteousness, he loves, all right? This speaks of the believer who pursues righteousness with his whole heart. He dedicates his life to living for the Lord. He chases after purity and holiness, right? So uh the child of God, um we chase after the the righteousness, listen, the righteousness, the characteristics, all right? The act of righteousness, we learn from the Lord and we chase after the Lord, all right? That we may learn of the righteousness, all right? I'm gonna show the difference in the righteousness. Matthew's chapter five, verse six, uh Deacon Neville's, Matthew's chapter five, verse six.
Amen, Matthew the five, verse six. "Blessed are they which do hunger and thirst after righteousness, for they shall be filled."
Okay, so um and it's gonna all tie in um tonight, it's gonna all tie in together tonight, all right? Um we chase after the purity and holiness, all right? Um uh our desire, our thirst, our hunger, our cravings is after the righteousness, the purity, the holiness in the Lord, okay? Uh our desire is to do the will of of the Lord, okay? "The evidence that you are one of God's elect and beloved in heaven is your pursuit of righteous living." All right? The evidence that you are one of God's elect and beloved in heaven is your pursuit of righteous living. The question is, then which way are you headed? Because either you thirsting and hungering after righteousness or you're thirsting and hungering after your your flesh, all right? But the evidence uh that we are children of God, all right? And that we are loved in heaven, the evidence can be seen in what we are pursuing after. We thirsting and hungering after righteousness, all right? This is the way we should be headed, but the question that must be asked, which way are you headed? Which way are you headed? Um uh which is um a sign um or evidence who we are, all right? That's why the child of God uh it's strange, if a child of God said, I'm tired of praying, I'm tired of reading, I'm tired of doing the will of God, I'm I'm tired to be a child of God, I'm tired, 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 then then you're headed the wrong way because the evidence that you are one of God's elect is through, is seen through your pursuit, all right? It's evidence in your pursuit. Am I going too fast? Okay. Now, there are two applications of righteousness to the child of God. The two applications of righteous to the child of God, what I want you to see. God's life, the ethical and the theocratic, all right? All righteousness, but two applications, which is what I'm gonna explain. You got the ethical and theocratic of righteousness. Martin Luther um in his thesis explained it as well based on Galatians, all right? So two applications of righteousness to the child of God, God's uh life, uh the ethical and theocratic. All right, the ethical and the theocratic. The ethical righteousness is concerned with the conduct of men with one another. The theocratic righteousness is concerned with man being made righteous before God. And many call it passive and active righteousness. I'm gonna explain it tonight. Passive and active righteousness, all right? So you have the ethical righteousness um um with man, all right? Because of who we are, and then you have the theocratic righteousness, which was imputed upon us, uh which was gifted to us, not rewarded to us. Okay, um and many have called it, ma- matter of fact, uh Martin Luther in his thesis called it passive act, passive and active righteousness. I'm gonna explain it to you. Passive and active righteousness. Passive, meaning we have nothing to do with it. The other is active, meaning we have everything to do with it. And it's important that we don't miss the two, all right? There's a righteousness we had nothing to do with that was imputed upon us, was gifted up to us. As children of God, there's a righteousness that we have something to do with. All right, are we on the same page so far? Does everyone get an idea of what I'm saying? There's a righteousness that we received gifted to us and there's a righteousness that gifted to us that that we have much to do with, all right? The characteristics, so you have the the passive and the active. All right, a believer's passive righteousness is his righteousness in the eyes of God. There's a Latin word, um uh I don't know, Reverend Allen, if you knew this, we learned this in in study. Uh it's called uh coram deo, it's a Latin word, coram deo, C A oh C O R A M uh deo, D E O, coram deo, and that means before the face of God, all right? So there's a righteousness um um in the eyes of God, is viewed as the vertical righteousness, all right? The vertical righteousness, which establishes our acceptance between us and God. Coram deo is the Latin word. In other words, the righteousness of another because it comes from outside of me. So the righteousness that that was gifted to me because of Christ Jesus, I had nothing to do with. Okay, I have nothing to do with the righteousness that was gifted to me because of Christ Jesus. They call that coram deo, that's the Latin word, all right? It means before the face of God. So so the righteousness that I received that was gifted to me, I had nothing to do with. Couldn't buy it, couldn't sell it, couldn't do no work for it. It was gifted to me because of Christ Jesus. We call that vertical righteousness, all right? There's nothing I can do about that. When I accepted Christ Jesus, that gave me that righteousness, that gift of righteousness that was imputed on me because of Christ Jesus, and I had nothing to do with that. You didn't die on the cross, you didn't shed any blood. Christ did that, pleasing the will and purpose of the Father for the sins of of man. We call that passive righteousness, all right? It was outside of us. So the righteousness we received in Christ Jesus was outside of anything we can do. Nothing we could do about it. We had to accept by faith what Christ did for us. And it was imputed upon us, this righteousness, this vertical righteousness that was gifted to us that we had, that we had nothing to do with. Now, does everybody understand that? All right, this righteousness in Christ Jesus, you and I had nothing to do with. That was between the Father and the Son. We call that passive or vertical righteousness. Okay, are we on the same page? All right, this passive righteousness is bestowed upon us the moment we believed in Jesus as Lord and Savior. Is what we received at salvation that allows us to be declared justified and forgiven in God's sight. That's vertical righteousness. As soon as we accepted Christ Jesus, it was imputed upon us righteousness, all right? It is the righteousness of faith and identity. It is the very perfection of Jesus imputed to us. There is a righteousness that we received that was imputed upon us on the day of salvation that you and I had nothing to do with. I wanna make sure uh I I drill that, this may be elementary to some, uh but but uh to me, it it still excites me every time I talk about it, all right? When I accepted Christ Jesus, there was a righteousness imputed upon me that I had nothing to do but have faith in the work of Christ his sacrifice to the Father on my behalf. We call that passive righteousness, that's a vertical righteousness. Both the Hebrew and Greek portions of the scripture make it clear that no man can be made righteous before God by the law. Deacon Neville's Ecclesiastes, Ecclesiastes chapter, chapter seven, verse twenty, and in Galatians, chapter three, verse eleven. "Yet God has always had for himself people that he called to himself and made righteous." There had to be a way, listen, in which man could be made righteous apart from the law and yet the law is still satisfied so that God is just. So there had to be a way that the law would be satisfied and God will be still just a just God, all right? So it had to be a way where we could not be involved but the perfect sacrifice and the Father. All right, Ecclesiastes, chapter seven, verse twenty.
Okay, Ecclesiastes uh seven and twenty. "For there is not a just man upon earth that doeth good and sineth not."
There's nothing we could have done to impute righteousness upon ourselves. You can't make yourself righteous. Christ is the only one that can make us righteous because there's no man, no man on this earth that is without sin. Only Christ Jesus. So because Christ was the ultimate greatest, the perfect sacrifice, because of Christ, it was a put it upon us righteousness because he's satisfied the will of the Father. All right, Galatians, chapter three, verse eleven.
Okay, Galatians three and eleven. "But that no man is justified by the law in the sight of God, it is evident, for the just shall live by faith."
Okay, so now by law, we were convicted, condemned, we talked about that on Sunday. Um none of us could walk in righteousness um because the law convicted us because of what we were and who we were, all right? So what God did was, he made himself a sacrifice in this, in the, in the, in the form of a servant, Christ Jesus, that he may die for you and I so that we can now have righteousness, vertical righteousness because of Christ Jesus. All right? "Now God would provide the perfect substitute sacrifice in his suffering servant, the Messiah. He will be smitten of God and afflicted when he was pierced for our transgressions and crushed for our iniquities. He will be sacrificed as guilt offering and the Lord will lay upon him all our iniquity. We needed someone who was perfect that would take our sins away and give us his righteousness." That's vertical righteousness. I'm getting excited, I'm gonna break it down, but I'm gonna get excited, all right? Uh so he took upon himself our iniquity and placed upon us his righteousness. And it was nothing we did. This was all Christ Jesus satisfying the will of the Father. All right, that's why Jesus called the suffering servant. He served the will of the Father. He came down, remember I said it Sunday, he was born for my past. He was born to save you and I from our sins because it was nothing we can do that can impute righteousness upon us. So Christ took upon himself our iniquities and our sins and in return gave us his righteousness. So all our worthless goodness and wicked sins are hidden with Christ in God and is now nailed to the cross. This is the exciting thing about it. Before we get into part and get into the the act of righteousness, we gotta understand the passive righteousness. Passive righteousness is in the face of God or before the face of God, it means you and I had nothing to do with this. But we can have something to do with active righteousness. Colossians, chapter three, verse three, Deacon Neville's.
Amen, uh Colossians three and three. "For ye are dead and your life is hid with Christ in God."
Okay, you are dead, your life is hid in Christ with God, all right? Colossians, chapter two, verse fourteen.
"Blotting out the handwriting of ordinances that was against us, which was contrary to us, and took it out of the way, nailing it to the cross."
Okay, here's the exciting thing. All our iniquity and all our sins was laid upon Christ. In return, he gave us in faith of receiving the gift from God, in return, it was a imputed upon us the righteousness, all right? That's vertical righteousness, we had nothing to do with that, I keep saying that. We have nothing to do with passive or vertical righteousness, all right? That was between Christ, the s- the suffering servant and the Father. All right, so this is the glory of the gospel. The sum and the substance of God's glad tidings that the son of God has stood in our place, suffered the wrath we deserved, endured the damnation we warranted and was punished in our stead. Now I say this again tonight, saints, you had nothing to do with that. I'm so glad I didn't, I would have messed that all up. I would have messed that all up. I'm so glad I had nothing to do with that. That's passive righteousness, that's the righteousness that was the gift because we received Christ Jesus, it was imputed upon us the righteousness of God. Second Corinthians, chapter five, verse twenty-one, uh Deacon Neville's.
Second Corinthians five and twenty-one. "For he, for he hath made him to be sinned for us who knew no sin, that we might be made the righteousness of God in him."
Oh, look how we walking right into that. Listen, he took on our sins, who knew no sins. He said, uh Sister Charlene, uh uh he said, uh uh trusty spirits, all your sins lay upon me and I'm gonna give you my righteousness so that you'll be in right relationship back with the Father. I want you to give me all your sins and I'm gonna lay on you righteousness so that you'll be in right standing with the Father, okay? Now, that righteousness, we have nothing to do with. I'm saying that because when we get to Proverbs, then the characteristics of what happened to us is now active righteousness. This is why I need to be kind to you. That's righteousness because of the righteousness I received in Christ Jesus. That righteousness, I had nothing to do, but the active righteousness, I can do something with. Oh, I'm gonna work it out, don't don't worry, I I'm gonna work it out, I gotta preach to Easter. All right, uh uh so 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 uh he who knew no sin took our sin. Good God almighty, that that that's a uh pick you up and turn you around. Uh he who knew no sin took on our sin. All right, which means Jesus on the cross uh actually felt the damaging results of sin that was done to the Father. He took on something he did not know. And in return, listen, didn't let us bear half of the pain, he gave us righteousness in return. That's passive righteousness, that's vertical righteousness. All right, so let me give you this illustration or show you this illustration, all right? You might wanna take a picture of this and and post it on your your sticky note or wha- wherever you wanna do it uh so that you be reminded. God made Christ sin for us on the cross. Let me try to get out the way. Hold on, see if I can get out the way. All right, I'm out the way, so you can see this. All right. Oh, keep moving back, hold on. All right, God made- Oh, keep moving back. Hold on. All right. God made him to be sin for us that we might be made the righteousness of God. Now look at the diagram. He took my sins. I received his righteousness. Good God almighty. If, if, if that don't make you shout, I don't know what. He took my sins and I received his righteousness. Did y'all get that? Everybody, everybody, everybody see that? Okay, all right. He took my sins and I received his righteousness. This is the reason that we, we were accepted or justified in God's sight. Not only did Jesus take our sins away, but he's given us his righteousness. All right, turn to Isaiah sixty-one, ten. This is one of those topics that, that's just, just amazing to me. Um, this is our passive righteousness, the robe of righteousness, which Jesus put upon us by grace through his faith and his work. Okay, Isaiah sixty-one, ten, Deacon Neville's.
Amen. Isaiah sixty-one and ten. I will greatly rejoice in the Lord. My soul shall be joyful in my God. For ye have clothed me with the garments of salvation. He hath covered me with the robe of righteousness. As a bridegroom deckets himself with ornaments, and as a bride adorneth herself with her jewels.
Okay, here's the exciting thing. Now in Isaiah sixty-one, if I'm not mistaken, Deacon Neville said, I will rejoice. The reason why I rejoice because he, he's given me righteousness and then, let me take my cloth, then he, he clothed me, gave me salvation, and then he clothed me. Can y'all see that? He clothed me with righteousness. He gave me a robe of righteousness. I gave him filthy garments and he gave me a robe of righteousness. That's a powerful work. Do you know how powerful that is? For me to give him my sinful garment and in return, he has given me a robe of righteousness that I may now have a relationship back with the Father. And here's the exciting thing about this before we move on. This is why we rejoice. I'm so glad man's hands were not involved in this work. I'm, I'm so glad. I'm, I'm so glad that God gave his only begotten son so that the work will be perfect and complete. So I don't have to go to sleep wondering. I can wonder about my active righteousness, how I'm treating other people, but my passive righteousness, I don't have to wonder because that had nothing to do with me. Uh, uh, he makes his beloved sleep, the Bible says. We can go to sleep because of the passive or the vertical righteousness that was imputed upon us the day of our salvation. He clothed us with righteousness. All right. A believer's righteousness, righteousness of character is now what I call the active or what we call the active righteousness we pursue. So when we look at the passages in proverbs, these are the wisdoms that we pursue because of the righteousness we receive. So the passive righteousness we receive helps us give active righteousness. Did everybody get that? Okay, this is why, uh, 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 when, and I, I, I'll explain a bit more. When it comes to one another, when it comes to creatures, when it comes to created things by God, we supposed to handle it with care because we have righteousness in Christ, which gives us active righteousness. We don't supposed to be wicked because we are pursuing after the righteousness that was imputed upon us. Okay, so a believer's righteousness of character is now the active righteousness we pursue. It now moves from inner to outer. From vertical to horizontal. From invisible to visible. From identity to reality, from Christ to creation. So what you're now carrying out is your vertical righteousness. All right, and this is what, which concerns, uh, it concerns our actions, our words, our behaviors, and our attitudes. That's the horizontal righteousness that we have something to do with based on the vertical righteousness we had nothing to do with. Are we all on the same page? I just want, I, I, I know we getting deep. I know, but this is a deep class. Uh, this is a very deep class. All right. Uh, uh, so, so when it, I got you brother Chauncey, when it was imputed upon us a righteousness that we had nothing to do with, it was gifted to us. That's called, that's called passive righteousness or, uh, uh, it's called, uh, passive righteous, uh, bureaucratic righteous. The ethical or the active righteous is based on the passive righteousness we receive. All right, so now my actions, my behavior, my attitude should be based on the passive righteousness I received in Christ Jesus. You can't receive the righteousness in Christ and do abomination things. Abomining things. All right, that's something we can do. We could not do the vertical righteousness. We had nothing to do with the vertical righteousness, but we have something to do with the horizontal. So that's why you can't tell me, uh, that wasn't me. I ain't mean to do that. Yes, you do. That's, you have a lot to do with that. That's gonna be what we talk about next week, self-control. Uh, because it's based on the righteousness of God. So now when we look at these scriptures and proverbs, these are the wisdoms that are given to believers based on the righteousness received in Christ Jesus. So yes, your actions should be different. Yes, your behavior should be different. Yes, your attitude should be different. Yes, your words should be different because it's not based on one who have not received righteousness. It's based on one who has received righteousness in Christ Jesus. Okay, Brother Chauncey.
Wow, that was like the, I'm trying to get, try to hold on what I had here. I was thinking, uh, Pastor, that that gift of righteousness was the gift of information. Uh, let me see if I say this right. The gift of righteousness was information that was given to us. Uh, that could it be said that became a fiber of our morale, of, of our morals?
Well, well, I, I see where you trying to go, but we, we wanna say, we don't want to mix the two, get the two twisted. That gift of righteousness was Christ Jesus. His work, his work alone. Now, our actions, our attitudes, our behaviors, our words are the, the horizontal righteousness that we have something to do with. So you have something to do with your attitude, your behavior, the words that come out your mouth. You got some, it ain't that I just opened my mouth and these came out. No, you got something to do with that. All right, uh, and that should be the righteousness that you have learned from the righteousness that you receive in Christ Jesus. All right, let me just, let me go a little, little deeper. So we make no mistake, salvation by grace alone through faith alone and no way negates man's responsibility in the world. As a child of God, there is a horizontal responsibility you, we have based on our vertical righteousness. James, chapter one, verse twenty-seven, Deacon Neville's. Let's go ahead and hit them hard while we got them all looking at the screen.
James, one and twenty-seven. Pure religion and undefiled before God and the Father is this, to visit the fatherless and widows in their affliction, and to keep himself unspotted from the world.
That's the ver- that's the horizontal righteousness. That's, that's the actions from the vertical righteousness we received. Did y'all get that? Helping the homeless, the orphans, the widows, the fatherless, the sick, the shut in. Building the kingdom of God, spreading the gospel. Those are things, those are righteousness we can do. That's based on the righteousness we had nothing to do with. Are we on the same page? So the evidence of true righteousness or true religion then is the proof of our standing before God. That's why you don't have to judge no one. Your attitude, your actions, your behavior is gonna show where you're standing. Yeah. All right, we might as well go a little deeper. The active righteousness of, of the Christian is his responsibility to demonstrate, to honor and glorify our God by how he or she lives. That's something you can do. The vertical righteousness you had nothing to do with, but the horizontal righteous, you can do it. You can live out and honor and demonstrate and glorify God in what you do. This is what gives us purpose, mission in the world, in life, and this is why we should not be idle or inactive in the will of God. Because we receive this vertical righteousness horizontally, we should be able to live it out. All right, when people say, I don't know my purpose, well, then you don't know God. Because as soon as I met him, I was ready to get started with the horizontal. Are y'all with me here? One thing that when I met Christ Jesus, the vertical righteousness and it was imputed upon me horizontally, I knew the gospel had to be spread. I knew now those who in need, I knew now to help those who oppressed, those who are suppressed. I, I, I know now that the Lord is using me, that others may come to know him. That's the horizontal, and that's something I can do. That's the righteousness I can do. Okay? All right, we, we go a little deeper here. All right, so Mike, go ahead, go for it.
Do you mind, um, and I know you gotta go deeper, but do you mind explaining? Cause I've said that a lot. I've said, I'm still trying to learn my purpose. So do you mind explaining it, please?
Well, our main purpose is to spread the gospel, seek the will of the Lord, and all that we do. That's the main purpose. Now, when people talk about purpose, most of the time people getting mixed up about being the CEO of their own company, uh, trying to do their own nonprofit. That's, that's something different. And sometimes uh, uh, a person may go through something in childhood and they may birth, um, an action or, um, or a desire to help maybe someone afflicted, someone, those who are orphans, those who were abused. It may, it may, um, trigger that desire to help those. And people say, well, that's my purpose. But my main purpose as a child of God is to share and spread the gospel of Jesus Christ and seek the will of the Lord. All right, all right. Now in that can be, other things can be birthed. All right, so we don't wanna get it twisted. All right, there's plenty that can be birthed out of our testimony, out of things that we had to endure. Things can be birthed, but, but our ultimate goal is to spread the gospel. I save you that you may witness to someone else that they may come to know me. That's the greatest thing that can ever happen to you and I and to someone who is an unbeliever. All right, so our responsibility, uh, is to demonstrate, to honor and to glorify God. All right, after receiving a righteousness that we had nothing to do with, we can now horizontally share righteousness, which is something we can do something about. All right, that's why it says two applications to righteousness. It's the vertical and it's the horizontal. All right, are we on the same page? Go for it, uh, Trustee Spears.
Uh, uh, can you guys hear me? I wanna thank you, Sister Jessica, for bringing that up because just like it just took some pressure off of me really quickly because I do have a habit of, you know, I think you see, you know, people, you know, they may be in a different ministry. They may come out with all kinds of things. They're out in the front. And you look at your life and you wonder what is your purpose? As if you're supposed to be doing something major and miraculous. And thank you, Lord, that just took a, a burden. I didn't even realize I was carrying it until I heard the explanation. I now am not going to keep concerning myself with what is a purpose. It, it's almost like it's a tangible thing. I don't know how often I'm like, Lord, you know, let me, what is my purpose? What am I supposed to be doing? Blah, 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 blah. And here tonight, I'm so glad you asked that question, Pastor. The explanation just took a heavy burden off of me from always wanting to know what my purpose is. So thank you, thank you, thank you, God. Thank you, Lord.
Amen, amen. Now here, here is our saints, what greater purpose than spreading the gospel of Jesus Christ? So when a per- when a person say, well, I'm trying to find my purpose. Well, what's greater than spreading the gospel of Jesus Christ? Now, like I said, in that, there's other things the Lord will gift you, talent you to do. There are other things that can be birthed from your pain. Many people have nonprofits. It's birthed from pain. Many people join ministries based on hearts desires, based on gifts that the Lord has given them, some based on talents. But the greatest purpose is to share the gospel and glorify the Lord. Are, are you with me? Okay, all right, all right. Which is something the righteousness we can do. All right, so the, here I go back. The way of the wicked is an abomination unto the Lord, but he love it. Him that follow after righteousness. So now that I received this love and everything that was imputed upon me that I didn't receive, I can now horizontally share love, help others, do for others, honor God and glorify God. I can do something with that. That horizontal righteousness. I will, we'll explain a little bit more. All right. The spiritual life of a Christian is wrapped up in revealing and evidencing Jesus' work in their lives. This is what Paul was intending when he said to the Galatians, uh, Deacon Neville's Galatians, chapter five, verse twenty-two through twenty-four.
Amen. Galatians five, twenty-two through twenty-four. But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, long suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance. Against such there is no law. And they that are Christ have crucified the flesh with the affections and lusts.
Okay, so now that we are wrapped up in Christ because of a righteousness that was imputed upon us, we had nothing to do. We do have something to do with sharing, honoring, glorifying God horizontally. Do y'all see that? So now, uh, is, is the Latin word, let me go back over before we go a little deeper. You have corum diem, which is before the face of God. That's the Latin word, corum diem. All right, that's vertical righteousness. Then you got corum mundo. Mundo is C-O-R-A-M-M-U-N-dio. Corum mundo is, uh, our stance in relationship to others or the eyes of the world. So you got corum diem, which is the vertical righteousness, and then you got corum mundo, which is horizontal. So listen, uh, you and I as saints should not be, listen, um, being cruel to animals, cruel to things that have been created by God, and cruel to people because that's a horizontal righteousness that we have something to do with. Did y'all get that? The vertical, the corum diem, we had nothing to do with, but we do have something to do with corum mundo, which is the horizontal righteousness. Okay. To pursue righteousness means to turn away from your own natural sinful desires and turn to Christ in his perfect and righteous ways. Through obedience to this command, God is preparing us for eternal life with him aligning us with our rightness through Christ. So what he's doing, as we practice the horizontal righteousness, after we receive the wisdom of God, we practice horizontal righteousness, righteousness, and the Holy Spirit starts to line us up with the righteousness that we receive in Christ Jesus. This is how we look more and more like Christ. Because our horizontal righteousness is lining up with our vertical righteousness. Yeah, people say, just to be like Jesus. Well, uh, to visit the sick, to, to help those who are shut in, to, uh, to help the homeless, uh, uh, the orphan, the widows, uh, uh, to build the kingdom of God, to, to, uh, to witness the gospel of Jesus Christ. When I do those horizontal righteousness, things which I can do, then the Holy Spirit lines me up with the righteousness that I receive in Christ Jesus. Reason why many, uh, may not become a Christ because a lot Reason why many, uh, may not be coming to Christ, because a lot of believers are not aligned. They treating horizontally people bad, but they saying they got a vertical righteousness. This is why we gotta surrender to the, the guidance of the Holy Spirit, so he can align us with the vertical righteousness, so that when we do horizontal things, it's based on horizontal righteousness and not our sinful nature. Am I helping anyone? Are we all on the same page? Okay, all right, all right. Go ahead, Reverend Greenlee.
Um, when we read James one twenty-seven a moment ago, um, that first part about the pure religion, you know, serving others. Um, I think it's very important to, uh, stress that part B of that is the thing that a lot of times keeps us or can keep a person from doing that is being spotted by the world. Meaning we've gotten so distracted by just the glitz and the glamour, the power, the money, the lust, the everything else that we so spotted, we can't be any, any good on the other side.
Right, right. Now, thank you Reverend Greenlee. Now, keep in mind, the horizontal, the horizontal is based on the vertical. It goes from inward now outward. Is what I receive to now what I do. It goes from invisible, what Christ did for me, to now what's visible. So my horizontal righteousness is something I, I have something to do with. You have something to do with being nice to somebody, to helping someone who's sick or in need. You have something to do with that. You say, I don't have nothing to do with. You got a whole lot to do with that. You had nothing to do with the vertical righteousness, but you do have something to do with the horizontal. Okay? All right, now here we go. Let me call them out. These are the people I want to pull up these scriptures and then we're going, we're gonna just, just drive it on home. All right. Deaconess Barnes, Proverbs, chapter three, verse thirty-three. All right. Reverend Greenlee, I want you to do chap, uh, chapter six, chapter ten, I'm sorry. But you're gonna be doing six, eleven, sixteen, twenty-five and thirty. So chapter six of Proverbs, chapter ten of Proverbs, I'm sorry. All right. Deacon Ogbo, not yet, Deacon Ogbo. Sister Pippi. Sister Pippi, chapter eleven, verse eight, eighteen to twenty-three. Deacon Ogbo, chapter twelve, verse five. Sister Raynell, chapter fifteen, verse twenty-eight, twenty-nine. First Lady, chapter eighteen, verse ten. Sister Charlene, chapter twenty-one, verse twenty-one, these are all in Proverbs. And Mama Harris, you gonna bring it up by doing chapter twenty-nine of Proverbs, verse six and verse seven. Now, what we're gonna learn in these verses is the characteristics of the righteous. All right? The act of righteousness that we should be seeking because of our vertical righteousness or passive righteousness. All right, passive righteousness that we receive in Christ Jesus. Act of righteousness is what we can do. So we seek the word of God to know how we should be acting in righteousness because of who we are in Christ Jesus. Did y'all get that? This is how we get to now these scriptures in Proverbs. Okay, Lord, now that I have been made righteousness in you, or righteousness been imputed upon me because of all you have done, how should I act? How should I think? Or what should be seen in me horizontally to those that I come in contact with? Are y'all with me? All right, Proverbs, chapter three, verse thirty-three. Go for it.
Amen. Proverbs, chapter three, verse thirty-three says, "The curse of the Lord is in the house of the wicked, but he blesseth the habitation of the just."
Okay, the just, all right. Now, keep this in mind, these are the wisdoms that we're looking for now that we understand our passive or vertical righteousness. Now horizontally, we want to seek the wisdoms so we know how to act as children of God horizontally. All right? Proverbs chant, chapter ten. Go for it.
Proverbs ten and six, blessings upon the head of the just, but violence covereth the mouth of the wicked.
Okay, stop right there. Stop right there. It says blessings, blessings upon the head of the just. Okay, that's those who are made righteous in Christ. The things that we do will be blessed because of our righteousness standing in Christ Jesus. All right? So now that we do, we have to know that our hands, actions, um, uh, our words, behaviors, when we do it based on the righteousness received is blessed horizontally. All right, verses eleven.
Verse eleven, "The mouth of a righteous man is a well of life, but violence covereth the mouth of the wicked."
Okay, so now it is something you can do because here, the mouth of a righteous man. All right, there's not gonna be no invisible hand that's gonna come from the sky and put his hand over your mouth. No, horizontally, that's something you can do based on what you have received vertically in Christ Jesus. All right, this is the work of the Holy Spirit. All right, this is why we gather the wisdoms. So now we're know what to do horizontally to others and to the things that God has created. Okay, uh, verse sixteen.
"The labor of the righteous tendeth to life, but the fruit of the wicked to sin."
Okay, now, uh, what we're gonna be reading and seeing is the contrast. The way of the life, the way of life that keepeth instruction, um, uh, the labor of the righteous tended to life, I'm sorry, verse sixteen, the way of the, the labor of the righteous tended to life, the fruit of the wicked to sin. All right, we're seeking the righteousness of God that we now may do and act in righteousness. All right, verse twenty-five.
"As a whirlwind passes, so is the wicked no more, but the righteous is an everlasting foundation."
Okay, now when he's talking about the righteousness, he's talking about those who have been, the righteousness have been imputed upon them. These are the actions and things and the characteristics of one who is a child of God and who has received the righteousness in Christ Jesus. All right? These are the things that we supposedly looking for, these are the wisdoms we supposedly practicing and following after. Okay, verse thirty.
"The righteous shall never be removed, but the wicked shall not inhabit the earth."
Okay. Are y'all getting this? Chapter eleven, verse eight.
"The righteous is delivered from trouble, and it comes to the wicked instead."
Okay, the righteous is delivered out of trouble. All right, we are pursuing these things, we seek these things because these are the wisdoms of the righteous one. All right, this is why, you know, even last week and before that, um, the prudent individual, we apply these wisdoms because horizontally, um, we want the characteristics of a righteous man to be seen in those we're in contact with. All right, horizontally, because of what has happened to us vertically. All right, keep going.
The wick, verse eighteen, "The wicked man does deceptive work, but he who sows righteousness will have a sure reward."
All right, these are just wisdoms for you and I. These are the characteristics that should be seen and done from you and I. That's why I said, I don't get, I'm not, I shouldn't be, uh, you shouldn't be shocked that I'm looking from you these things because of the horizontal righteousness you said you have received in Christ Jesus. I'm only looking hor, I mean, the vertical righteousness, I'm only looking horizontally what you said you received vertically. All right? So I'll be shocked if it's anything outside of what we're receiving, or seeing rather, or learning. Because it's based off one who's had, who has a vertical righteousness in Christ Jesus. Are we all on the same page? Okay, keep reading.
Verse twenty-three, "The desire of the righteous is only good, but the expectation of the wicked is wrath."
Okay, you, I, righteous man, righteous woman, your desire is good. Cause I know you designed the will of the Lord. All right, so our desires are good because we designed the will of the Lord. Okay, chapter twelve, verse five, did I give any more on that?
Proverbs twenty-five.
Okay.
"The thoughts of the righteous are right, but the cancers of the wicked are deceit."
Okay, so now what, what this, this, this wisdom of Solomon is showing us that the thoughts of the righteous are right. You should have good thoughts, right thoughts. You should not be waking up with wicked thoughts. You should have right thoughts because those is something that we expect from righteous. Wouldn't you be shocked if, if somebody of a Christian say, I'm a child of God, I just love the Lord, already done for me, say, but man, I feel like killing so and so. Boy, if I had a gun, I would, you'd be like, oh, my God, what in the world is going on? Because that doesn't sound like a righteous individual. Are y'all with me here? Am I helping anybody? Okay, chapter fifteen. Who has that?
Me.
Okay.
"The heart of the righteous studyeth the answer, but the mouth of the wicked poureth out evil things."
Okay, here's another wisdom, you and I who are righteous. The heart of righteous study the answer. We don't just spew out things. Righteous people study the answers. All right? But the mouth of the wicked pourth out evil things. Okay, keep going, verse twenty-nine. Sister Raynell. She must have logged off or got kicked off. All right, verse twenty-eight, "The heart of the righteous study the answer, to answer, but the mouth of the wicked pourth out evil things." Verse twenty-nine of chapter fifteen says this, "The Lord is far from the wicked, but he hears the prayer of what? The righteous." He's far from the wicked, but he hears the prayer of the righteous. All right, chapter eighteen, verse ten.
Eighteen and ten, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; the righteous runneth into it and is safe."
Okay, we are the righteousness because of Christ Jesus. Our actions and ways are righteous because we're seeking thirst and hunger after righteousness in Christ Jesus. All right, so now where we gonna run? The righteous run to the Lord. They don't run to the world, they don't run to man, the righteous run to the Lord. That's just a characteristic quality of a believer. We run to the Lord. All right, chapter eighteen, verse ten. I got some bullets for you before we go, eighteen to ten.
I just read that.
Okay, all right. Twenty-one, twenty-one.
"He that follows after righteousness and mercy fineth life, righteousness and honor."
Underline that.
I did.
"He that follows after righteousness and mercy fineth life." Fineth life. This is why horizontally, we want to do the righteousness to glorify our God. Because he that followed after righteousness and mercy fineth life, righteousness and honor. Chapter twenty-nine, verse six and seven. Mama Harris?
Proverbs twenty-nine. Proverbs twenty-nine, six and seven. "In the transgression of an evil man there is a snare, but the righteous does sing and rejoice." Numbers seven says, "The righteous considers the cause of the poor, but the wicked regardeth not to know it."
Okay, so now this is, this is why there should be more children of God helping and doing and supporting because we know what we should be doing. All right, the, the transgression of an evil man, there's a snare, but the righteous, we sing and rejoice. We righteous people. We sing and rejoice because we're righteous. We're singing and rejoicing because our righteousness was not based on man, it was based on the work of Christ Jesus. That's something I had nothing to do. I can sing. It's good to sing about something you had nothing to do with, but it was done for you. I can rejoice on that. All right? But then in verse seven, also, here's the wisdom, "The righteous consider the cause of the poor." So horizontally, I should not have to pump you up to do what a righteous man should be doing. Shouldn't have to pump you up, shouldn't have to keep trying to poke you and pry, pry you open to do something. Righteous people know what to do. Righteous people know what to do based on the righteousness they received in Christ Jesus. Okay? I want you to write these keys down. Take a picture of them. Write them down. Now, before I go over these few keys, does everyone understand now passive righteousness and active righteousness? Which is vertical, horizontal. Two applications of righteousness. One, we had nothing to do with, the other, we have something to do with. And the only way the act of righteous can be done where God will receive it, there had to be a receiving of the gift that God gave. Now that I receive by faith Christ Jesus and all he has done for me, I can act in righteousness because of the righteousness I receive. All right, here's the key. The urgency of the Christian life lies not in the clawing or climbing of our way to God, but in the confirming and demonstrating the truth of the gospel by how we live. I'm only looking for your horizontal righteousness because you say you are a child of God. Because I know you had nothing to do with the vertical, but you do have something to do with the horizontal. Did everybody get that key? All right, I'll just give you one more minute. All right, some people are still writing, uh, and still using a pencil. All right, here's another key. Your act of righteousness can't alter your standing before God, but it can affect your neighbor's perception of you and your relationship with God. Ah, you can sit down all you want and not do anything. Yeah, it won't affect your, your passive righteousness, but it can affect your neighbor's perception of your relationship with God. So the reason why they may not want to come to you for advice or come to you for a prayer because they getting the wrong perception of your relationship with God. Even though your, your horizontal or your, your active righteousness can't be altered, cannot alter your standing with God, it can affect your perception of you and your relationship with God, with your neighbor. Did y'all get that? Now, it can't touch your passive because you had nothing to do with that. But it can affect someone's perception of your relationship because you're not doing anything. So many people can wonder if you're really a child of God because they don't see you doing anything. Yeah, it doesn't affect your passive righteousness, but your perception is causing one not to want to know Christ. Did y'all get that key? Here's another key. Your life reveals whether or not you are chasing righteousness. Your life reveals whether or not you are chasing righteousness. Your life reveals whether or not you're chasing righteousness. A righteous believer will be quick to do the things of the Lord because it's based on because it's based on what was done for me. Alright, I think I got one more key for you. Here it is. A choice yields a consequence. A series of choices leads to a habit, and a way of choosing will lead to a lifestyle. Where are you? Where are your choices leading you? Because a choice leads, yields a consequence, and a series of choices leads to a habit, and a way of choosing will lead to a lifestyle. So where are your choices leading you? Where are your choices leading you? Are you choosing to, to do righteous? And to evidence to those horizontally what was done for you vertically? Are you making a choice to do horizontally the horizontal righteousness that's based on the vertical righteousness? Alright, so when you think of righteousness, people say, "I am the righteousness of God," yes, but you are evil towards me. Okay, you're nasty, you gossip, you slander, you persecute. I, I don't know where you're standing. Alright, because horizontally, we supposed to seek after righteousness and do and glorify God horizontally based on what we have received vertically. Does everyone understand righteousness? A little bit more than what, what you thought.
Yes, man, that was good. I certainly have a better understanding of that, and I don't know why I'm feeling so good, but I certainly.
I know that's right.
I feel really good right about now. I just feel like my, a light came on and opened my eyes. I was praying earlier, and I don't know why this purpose thing, purpose thing kept weighing so heavy, but it was revealed in such an awesome way tonight. I'm like, like, I have tears of joy in my eyes from this understanding. I, I know we all got it differently, but this was for me tonight, and if Sister Jessica had not asked that question, it, I, it would not have been answered in the way the Lord knew I needed to hear. I am just overjoyed with tonight's lesson. Thank you, Pastor, and you broke it down and in an awesome way. Thank you, thank you, God. I'm, I'm really feeling good, y'all, I really am.
Amen, amen. That's how we should feel after coming together and reading the Lord, studying about His word. Cordeo, the vertical, coromundo, the horizontal. Two applications of righteousness. One, I had nothing to do with. The other, I have something to do with. I have something to do with being nice to you, being kind to those who are less fortunate. I have something to do with that. That's the righteousness that others can receive based on the righteousness that I have received. The first ones to, the, 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 uh, the first callers, or the first ones, or first responders, let me say, first responders to the things of this world, the hurts and pains of the world, should be the believers. Horizontally, our righteousness should be seen to those, uh, around us based on a righteousness we had nothing to do with. This, this is why, you, you, you're Pastor, until the Lord let me leave, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be a hundred and four. I've been, you know, I, I keep adding more years to my life. At a hundred and four, Mother Harris, uh, I want you to know this that I will always cry tears of joy because of what Christ has done for me. There's gonna always be tears of joy because what he has done for me. Don't think I'm crying because something been snatched away. No, I'm crying, I'm crying because of all he has done for me. And the more I learn, the greater I am in him, the greater and the more gratitude I have for all he has done. Just think about it, the righteousness that Christ imputed upon you and I, you had nothing to do with. You ain't have a finger on it, you had no say-so about it. It has something to do with the Father and the Son. And he thought about you and I, and he took upon himself our sins, and the Bible says, "He nailed it to the cross." And in return, he clothed us with a robe of righteousness. And you wanna know why the devil hates you? Do you wanna know why? I just told you why he hates you. I just told you why he wants to destroy you, why he wants to kill you. I just told you why he cannot stand you because God redefined who you were. You are no longer a sinner, you are saved by grace. My mother used to sing a song in the kitchen, Sister Charlene, when she would cook for seven, seven of us, she says, "I gave him my old filthy garment, and he gave me a robe of pure white." Good God almighty, I gave him something and he gave me something back. Can I tell you something? The, the best I was able to offer God, Deacon Neville's, was my filthy, stinky sins. And guess what? He said it doesn't matter. I got something for you, just like Joseph. Uh, the coat, listen, the coat of many colors, we received a robe of righteousness. Good God almighty. So why not, and why should not people look for the righteousness horizontally from us because of the righteousness we have, our thirst and our hung after, hunger after righteousness? And Jesus said, "Those who, who wants the wisdom about how to be, how to act horizontally, you thirst and you hunger after righteousness, and guess what? I'll fill you tonight," we found out in Proverbs. He'll fill us with the wisdoms of how we should be as children of God. I gave him my old filthy garment, and in return, he gave me a robe of righteousness. That's why I shout out. Listen, when I'm shouting, Mother Harris, I'm shouting with my robe on. That's all. I'm shouting with my robe on. When I get excited, it's just because I keep looking at my robe, and I know I had nothing to do with it, but he clothed me with righteousness. And I'm so glad because when the Father sees me, he, he sees the perfect sacrifice. Ah, case dismissed, case dismissed, saved by, saved by grace. Ah, saved by grace. Let me stop because I, you know, I can, I'll talk and preach all the way to Resurrection Sunday. Uh, I get excited, uh, about all that the Lord has done, and this is why I say it's very important for us to come together. Very important for us to dig deep in the Word of God, and, and I'm so glad about the topics in Proverbs that we may get a greater understanding. All thy, you know how wise you are getting in the Lord, in all you're getting, we get an understanding. Now, here's the thing, no one can tell you about righteousness. I know that's right. Tomorrow morning, somebody might ask you, "Well, what does that mean?" Oh, do you got some time? I can explain to you. Both passive and active righteousness, both corum deo, Latin word, both coromundo, the vertical and the horizontal, before the face of God and our stance in relation to others. If you wanna ask me about righteousness, I can show you and I can tell you. Any questions, any concerns? Go for it.
Pastor, it's a blessing, it was a good lesson today. It is definitely a blessing to know why God gave you the vision of the name of the church. Hear the word, because we definitely hear the word each, each time we're out. We definitely get something, food to chew on, something to think about. Sometimes you gonna ask a question, but somebody already asked a question that you, that you wanna ask. All you can do is just shake your head, because I know what's, what Sister Jessica asked. It was in my mind too about what that is, but was, was, when she said it, so Tawana said, it wasn't no, I mean, this is the one neither, what, no need me saying it. I could just shake my head, yes. I had that thought too.
Amen, amen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for, for your vision. Thank you for the name, because it really, each, each, each even that you speak to us, it changes something in us.
Amen, amen. We thank the Lord, alright? Amen, amen. The word is at work in us. The word is at work in us.
Pastor.
Go for it.
So I just wanna say that, that that was a lot because I have too many gadget gadgets over here, and I usually never speak. It's my turn to have a verse, and my computer goes shut off on me. So I just wanna say my verse, my last verse is,
Go ahead.
"The Lord is far from wicked, but he hears the praise of the righteousness."
I know that's right.
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Now, Sister Rayna, you know, like I know, I, I church has always attacked, uh, fire at the virtual service and, and, you know, power going out, and, but we continue on because we are more than conquerors. And so the devil was defeated, you still got your scripture, your scripture all. Amen, amen. We receive it. We receive it. Amen, we receive it, we receive it. Listen, uh, everything so far, uh, everything looks good for Sunday. Uh, I think we're gonna have some good weather, um, and so I, I'm expect, asking everyone, if you can, just come, if you wanna look through the gate, just look through the gate. If you wanna stay on three oh one, just get out, get you some fresh air is, it will be, uh, what we acknowledged, uh, or set aside as resurrected Sunday. Um, we are excited because he got up. And because he got up, I can't stay down. Matter of fact, I could have preached that, Reverend Greenlee, uh, because he got up, I can't stay down. Um, uh, but I'm excited. Don't know what the Lord's gonna give me for Sunday, um, but you know, like, I'm not a seasonal pastor. I don't go with seasons, I go with the Lord, well, they on my heart, um, and so, uh, but I'm excited because we can rejoice because he got up. Remember, they went to look for him, and the angel said, "Why are you looking for the living among the dead?" Good God almighty, why are you looking there? He's no longer there, he's seated at the right hand of the Father. He's seated at the right hand of the Father, and when the devil try to put me down, he'll stand up on my behalf. He'll stand up on my behalf. When the devil tries to talk about me, I can hear Jesus saying, "That case was already dismissed." That case was already dismissed. He's already been acquitted for that. He al- he's already been acquitted for that. Amen, amen. I think, uh, Sister Rhonda typed this in, I looked at the text later, she called it double jeopardy. Amen, amen. You can't try me twice, it's already been acquitted. Isn't that good? Isn't that, is, is, can't you get a good sleep tonight? You can get a good sleep tonight.
Yeah, that's real good, Pastor.
A good sleep tonight because there was a righteousness I had nothing to do with, and I'm so glad God had a design for you and I, and listen, I am glad he died. And I'm glad he was buried. And I'm glad he rose from the grave. Good God almighty. A bad night turned into a good morning. A bad night turned into a good morning. Alright, let's, 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 let's get out of here because I, I, I'll get stirred up some more, amen. Gracious God, we thank you once again for tonight's lesson. We thank you, Lord, for all that we have learned and the things that we're learning, uh, both in church, outside of church, both when we fellowship and then outside in our own walk and our own journey with you. We thank you so much for the righteousness that was imputed upon us so that now, Lord, we can walk and act in the righteousness and glorify you. We thank you, God, for those who received revelation in the midst of our lesson. Bless every home. Lord, let your healing hand wipe over our houses. We thank you, God, for protecting us and keeping us and keeping our mind in perfect peace. We thank you for being called children of the Most High God. Now, Lord, if you will it to be, come Sunday, we take in the service by storm with praise and worship. Then we wanna sit at your feet and hear from you. We ask all these things in the lovable name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we pray. Let everyone say, "Amen." God bless everyone. Thank you, Deacon Neville's, for being my go-to man. Amen, amen. Maximize your evening in the Lord. Good to see everyone.
Guys, love you guys.
Brother Bruins, God bless you, man.
Yes, God bless you.